Thank you everybody for joining us for our August meeting. We have a relatively abbreviated agenda. Some August we don't actually have a meeting, but we have some items that we need to go through tonight, so we did go ahead and call the meeting.
Chuck.
We need the mic thing.
Oh, sorry. So, thank you for coming to the meeting. We don't always have an August meeting, but we do have some items that we need to attend to, so we decided to go ahead and have a meeting. Principally, the item that required the meeting was the approval of some grants that we're going to be applying for. So, in terms of unfinished business, it looks like we have to vote on the 2018-2019 officers. So if I could ask the nominations committee to put forth a motion for a vote?
I am putting forth a motion for a vote for the executive committee to remain as it is with Charles Burke being the president of the board. It's Chuck, but we all know it's Charles. Deirdre Clark is vice president and Yedira Ramos-Herbert is the secretary treasurer. Secretary, that's what I meant, just secretary. All in favor? Anyone want a second? The motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? I vote aye also. Anyone abstain? Okay. Got that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Just moving on to our first item, or I guess our only item under new business before we go to public discussion and then the committee reports. Tom, I'm going to pass it over to you for the grant.
Sure. Thank you.
I know, there's a terrible fly, so we might be going like this, the fly.
Interpretive dance.
It's not a statement otherwise.
It's a fly, it's not a statement, or anything being said.
Interpret it.
I'll try to.
Interpret.
Interpretive dance, okay. First of all, welcome this evening. We're sorry to drag you out on a hot August evening, but we'll do our best to go quickly. One of the major focuses of our agenda this evening is our application, our future application for two New York State Library construction grants. In the past 12 years, we've been extraordinarily successful. We've been able to improve both this building as well as the Huguenot Children's Library. We've received over $1.5 million to bring a better building, a safer building, a more attractive and appealing building to our residents and our patrons. And these two projects will continue in the same vein. We are allowed to apply for one grant per year, per building, and we are doing so. One grant will be for the main library, and the other grant application will apply to the Huguenot Children's Library. The Huguenot Children's Library grant is fairly simple, basic. We are in the position of having to replace our furnace, our gas furnace, which was installed in 1996 as part of the original partnership renovation project. We have been nursing it along. We think the period of nursing is about to expire, so we do have a cost estimate in hand to replace the furnace, the gas furnace, for $15,000. And to that end, I have three motions to ask the board to approve, which is pro forma for any state grant application that we make. The first one is for, is I ask the board to make a motion to agree to the assurances stipulated by the New York State Education Department in relation to the New York State Library Construction Grant application for the Huguenot Children's Library Furnace Replacement Project. So I'm asking for a motion and a second, and then a vote.
I'll make a motion to approve. Deirdre, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The next motion that relates to the Huguenot Children's Library, I'm asking the board to make a motion, then a second, and we are allowed to submit the Smart Growth Impact Statement as required by the New York State Education Department in relation to the New York State Library Construction Grant application for the Huguenot Children's Library Furnace Replacement Project.
Before you vote, could you describe what the Smart Growth Impact Statement generally is about?
It's a statement that's asking us to affirm that what we're planning to do is green and appropriate, which it is. You know, we're choosing a far more energy efficient than we were able to install in 1996. And so we do meet the criteria for that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you, board. Last motion vis a vis the Huguenot Children's Library Furnace Replacement Project. I'm asking that a motion be made that we affirm and declare that the Huguenot Children's Library Furnace Replacement Project qualifies as a State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECR, Type II action, thus classifying the proposed restoration and use of the above land as requiring no further review under SECR in its implementing regulations.
Can I make a motion?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you. The next and final set of motions relates to the project here at the main library, and that's a more complicated and involved effort, and it will ultimately be a more expensive effort. I do not have a dollar figure. We are still working through the cost estimations. It's challenging to get all these disparate pieces together, but we will have it together as we've had in previous years. But let me just describe it a little bit for your consideration and the public's consideration. As you folks know, we have made this concerted effort to improve the physical plan to the building, both through the state grant applications as well as bonding monies. The state grant applications in most, but not all instances, have been to improve the physical demeanor and space in the library. Most of our bonding projects have related specifically to infrastructure projects. This grant application is, again, in the same vein as others similar, which relates to improving the physical plan vis a vis patrons and their experiences in the library. And it's tied to the second floor. We've done the first floor, which is really wonderful, the grant monies for the current year's project, which is the gateway project, which is changing the circulation desk, the security desk, security gates, and other assorted patron self-checkout. The grant money, we're told, will be coming in a few weeks, and we'll be moving forward with that later on this year, probably in December when the library gets a little bit quieter. But this project is going to relate to the second floor. And what we've been doing is we've been working with our staff to articulate the things that we need to upgrade or change or improve that one encounters when one uses the second floor. There are many components, I'll just try to list them and not go into too much detail. First, we need a new information desk. The information desk that we have there is 20 years old, and it's extremely large. It's not particularly patron-friendly. It's almost like a wall, and we're going to replace that with a desk that's far smaller and far more sort of patron-friendly. That also, the desk that we're placing also is sort of an antiquarian component because print was big, and we had to have print all around us when we answered our reference questions. And that's really not, sadly, in some ways, not really the truth anymore. What we're also looking at in terms of this grant is we're trying to upgrade our local history room. The room is successful in many ways, but it does not have climate control capacity. We need to take care of our treasures, our old items, and we will do so, and this grant will be able to provide a ceiling and provide a separate climate control system that will allow us to safeguard our materials. And we'll also be doing some upgrades in the room that relates to some technology and some furniture, not terribly expensive, but, you know, a lot of the pieces in there are sort of like cast-offs that have sort of landed there, you know, in a, you know, the way that usually works. Another area that we're looking to improve is the help center. The help center was once a conference room when that space was renovated over 20 years ago. Since that time, we've become heavily invested in providing social service assistance to our community, and that is really the nerve center for that assistance. And if you've gone in that room, it's a big, large room with, again, a cast-off table and chairs. But we need to change that because as the room is being used now, there are many people who are being counseled and counseled about matters of privacy relating to health, about job, it might be relating to some social service issues. So what we want to do is reconfigure the room. We're not going to change the basic space, but we're going to install more private areas so that a counselor and a person, or a counselor and two people can repair to that room and have a private conversation without exposing, you know, your business to everyone else in the room. So we're going to be doing that. We're going to be adding laptops in there. We're going to be changing some furniture. We're going to be upgrading the storage. So that's another area that we're going to be improving. Right adjacent to it is the Handelman Business Opportunity Center, one of our best-used spaces with great views of the courtyard and green space. The tables, 20 years old plus, are falling apart. They're well-used. Chairs are falling apart, so we want to change the furniture there. We want to add more electrical power so people can plug in, because that's just a basic element of how people use the libraries now. So that's another area. Let's see what else we're doing. Let's see. In the local, in the local history area, not in the room, we're going to purchase another microform scanner. We have one now, which is tremendously helpful. People can find a newspaper instead of printing it out. They can, they can use it, scan it, and then send it to their email. It's really popular. And so we want, we need another one because it's become so popular. We want to buy, we want to get another scanner because we're finding that people, just for their business, they want to use a scanner for personal papers, et cetera. Another laptop, and we want to get a book scanner too as well, which we're finding we need for some of our rare books as well. So that's, that's, that's that. We haven't forgotten the basics. Painting, we're going to be painting that space. It desperately needs it. It hasn't been painted in a long time, 20-plus years. Carpet as well, we're going to be changing carpet out. The carpet is 20 years old, looks, even though our cleaning service has done a great job trying to restore it, it's still, it's tired and it needs to be retired.
Retired.
Retired, yeah. Sorry, yeah. That was a bad one.
We're all tired.
Yeah. Another really important issue that we're finally tackling is the issue that we get probably the most complaints about outside of parking, which is not our business, and that's the acoustics in the building. It's loud. You know, when the building was built, it was successful, won an AIA award, but there was never any sense of creating an environment that would, dead and sound. Noise travels here everywhere in the building. And we're in conversations with consultant to provide an acoustical study that will give us, give us prices, I don't have it yet, that will help us try to mitigate some of these really difficult issues. We might have an event on the, in the lobby, and, which we love, you know, could be our student artist program, but the library is just, you know, jumping elsewhere because it's just so loud. So, so the acoustical consultant will come up with some solutions that will help us make the space more friendly to our, to our patrons, and yet not, not change the basic nature of what we do. So that's that. Let's see what else. I know, we're trying to, we're trying to change out the lighting to all LED.
No, LED.
And we're not going to probably go the very expensive route and change anything. We want to retrofit some things. And so, so we'll have cheaper, better, greener lighting, but I don't have an exact price on that, but we're getting there. Let's see what else.
This is all under the grant?
All under the grant.
So, I guess my question is, what happens if we don't get this grant to all these wonderful things that you want to do?
Well, we'd have to, usually we, I-
We get the grant.
We will get, we will get some of the money, maybe all the money. If we get some of the money, then we have to make some tough decisions. Maybe what we can do is say, you know, this year we're going to do X, Y, and Z, and then we say, okay, next year, we're going to circle back and we're going to try to finish it. So, you know, we can, we can break it up into components if we have to do it.
So this isn't one we have to match? This is like-
This is a match grant. This is a match grant.
Is it a match grant?
How much do we have to match?
Well, it's, because of our economic designation, it's 25%. Dr. Gray will say most libraries have 50/50 match, but because of our particular situation, we only have to come up with one quarter.
It's about the census tracts.
What's the amount?
It's about the-
It's about the census tracts.
The census tract.
That's what you look.
And that helps.
Well, that's what, yeah, that's what you look at.
And what's the amount? Do we know? The total amount?
I would, I'm still working on an exact number. I've, I've been able to suss out about $200,000. We might see another $150,000 or so. I'm just not entirely certain.
So I guess at some point, yeah, we have to figure out how we're going to come up with that match.
I'm hoping to look at the foundation. We've also been successful, we're working on actually, in what might be a critical match for this grant that we're about to receive through the good graces of Senators Stewart-Cousins. We have a $100,000 grant that's being looked at. I've been in touch with Susan Grelick, who is the grants person for Senator Stewart-Cousins.
That's the one you guys-
Yes. Dr. Gray was kind enough to lead the charge with myself and a staff member.
So, so when is this grant due, and when do you, when do they expect the announcement of the award?
Daniel, the grant is due on August 20th. It's coming up.
That's like tomorrow.
No, happily not, no. No, but we're used to kind of walking the tightrope. Jean's happy to do that.
Are you?
It was a joke. Probably in bad taste, too. But, yeah, we'll talk later. So I'm going on vacation after the grant, for mental health.
So are we estimating like an announcement in October, November to be awarded in the January of 2019?
Exactly. Dr. Gray is on the Westchester Library System Board of Directors. That body makes the decision, will affirm the decision made by the Public Library Directors' Association, and that decision is usually made in the month of September, and the board will confirm that decision in late September, early October.
So you, do you, you have a lobby for this board?
Reverend Clark, please leave me sit here, please. I'm being WLS representative.
No, but I mean, so it comes through them?
Yeah.
The WLS?
It does, it comes through.
Okay.
No, no, no pressure, Dr. Gray.
No, please don't.
Don't ask.
But, so, so that's what we're doing. So we're really trying to change the second, we're going to, we have some improvements to be made in the teen area. We need to fix some electrical outlets. We're looking at the possibility of moving away from the computers located in a pod around a pool to another configuration.
Lots of things.
Yeah, lots of things. The kiosk that we were able to introduce this current year through the foundation, which is six laptops that allow the teens to borrow these machines. We'd like to add another six because it's become tremendously popular. So, so we really want to make the space more effective, more attractive, and ready for us to face, you know, what we believe the future to be.
So, the only thing I would ask is, at some point, if we don't get all the money, if you could prioritize for us and let us know kind of what your priorities are, and then also let us know if you're going to be asking, if we're going to be in a situation where we need to be helpful with the match part.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah. And what I would probably do is, depending upon the amount of money I receive, I'd probably circle back to our staff, our department heads, who are helping me craft this document. So, not me alone, but, you know, the people that really manage and run the library will help us decide what are the most important priorities.
That'd be great to know.
And, you know, what makes, what makes sense in terms of if we're going to go back for round two in the following year.
This might seem like a silly question, but would that document be fed to the needs assessment committee as well?
Sure.
Right, okay. Only because it seems if it's coming from staff in particular, that we can partner with them a little bit.
And we did send, we did compose, the staff did compose sort of the future of the facility. I think we sent it to the committee, Whitney and Cory and Deirdre. You got that document?
Yeah.
Yeah, good.
Great.
Yeah. So, no, but I'm happy to-
Yeah, just like ongoing dialogue, prioritizing. In particular, when you said the word priority, I thought that was compelling.
Okay, so I'm done talking. Now I'm going to ask for a motion.
Oh, yeah.
If I can find.
I'll make a motion.
I think he needs to read it.
If I can find it. Oh, there it is. All right, because we want to make this quick. Okay, I'm asking a motion to be made to agree to the assurances stipulated by the New York State Education Department in relation to the New York State Library Construction Grant application for the main library second floor renovation project.
I make a motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next motion to be, that we are allowed to submit a Smart Growth Impact Statement as required by the New York State Education Department in relation to the New York State Library Construction Grant application for the main library second floor renovation project.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Third and final, we ask that the board makes a motion to declare and affirm that the main library second floor renovation project qualifies as a State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECR, Type II action, thus classifying the proposed restoration and use of the above land as requiring no further review under SECR in its implementing regulations.
I'll make a motion.
Cory?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you. I'm done.
Yay!
Yay.
No more grants?
No more.
Now, so that was the new business. Do we want to, we don't have a lot of committee reports, do we? But I think we have one person signed up. Do you want to speak now, or do you want us to go through the committee reports? Up to you. Okay. Lourdes Fong? Going to the public to be heard.
Okay, hi. I will be speaking on the development, as well you know. I've had the opportunity and the joy in my, in my summer to come across a beautiful piece of artwork, which I will be giving to you, called "The Libraries Are Appreciated" by Jacob Lawrence, 1943. Wow. Acclaimed painter, storyteller, and educator Jacob Lawrence here presents the 124th Street Harlem branch of the public library in his watercolor titled "The Libraries Are Appreciated." As the title suggests, the library was much appreciated by the community, specifically those who migrated from the South, where public libraries either did not exist or were segregated. So, in relation to the development, my comments, our city is in the throes of a major gentrification, the inevitable result, the separation of the haves and the have-nots. The library now belongs to all, whether they have or not. It's ours. Allow it to become the vestal vial of a 20-story luxury apartment, and eventually, all will not be comfortable or even welcome. It will no longer belong to the public. We will go backwards. So, in our attempt to continue to influence you in not having any relationship with RXR whatsoever, my comments I offer.
And here's this beautiful piece of artwork, for the record.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It struck my heart. I just said, "Library, I gotta forget."
Where did you see it? Where did you see it? I'm sorry.
I was in Philadelphia.
Ah.
The Philadelphia Museum.
The Philadelphia Museum?
Yeah, that's the Schaumburg now, isn't it? That library, it's now the Schaumburg at Harlem? Isn't that the library?
Oh, the 124th Street Library? I'm not sure.
I'm not either.
I don't think, I think the Schaumburg doesn't separate the libraries.
Thank you.
But there is, there is a library.
So we'll go to the committee reports. Maybe we'll start with the WLS report?
Yes. I'd like a, I do have a report, but I don't like to point a personal privilege for just a moment. I've not been able to go to my office for the last three weeks because they're redoing the whole office, complete with asbestos and pulling up carpet and all that stuff. So I've had to, I've not, but I've been using as my office the library and a couple of, besides Barnes and Nobles and Starbucks. But what I want to say is that I am so proud, first of all, to be a WLS trustee and represent you, but so proud of our library system here in the county. I've had to, I found articles and books, particularly books, that I thought I was going to have to go to Amazon for, or, you know, or if New York University Library, you got them here in the county. And I'm, there's a hole down there almost every day for me. And so I am so proud of that because it means that the system is working, and it only takes a couple of days, and it's great, and your staff is wonderful. Your staff is just wonderful. So I wanted to say that.
Thank you.
Before I give my report, I have, well, as I give my report, I want to report specifically on two things. And let me say that I think you will like them both, because you're probably, the library trustees are probably, there are lots of boards, there are all kinds of boards, but the library trustee boards are usually board people who are in the service of the community, really, because there are only two, two issues that you need to deal with, seriously. I mean, you got to worry about the air conditioning, you got to worry about all of that, and the circulation desk, but you really need to be concerned with who's coming to the library and what services do you offer, and how good are those services? So, bad libraries build collections. Good libraries build services, but excellent libraries build community. And I know that's what you care about, else you wouldn't be here as a trustee, about what's inside these walls, but also how you get them out. So WLS, as one of its planning goals and its strategic plan, sees itself as serving as a center of innovation, because that's where we're headed. We're just ahead of the cloud. I mean, I know we're always going to have books, but quite frankly, that's kind of where we all are headed. And so, since we are a county system and we're state-sponsored, the vision is to provide model programs for libraries, affordable and easy-to-use information technology, and support services that enable libraries to continuously improve their services to their communities. Now, to that end, our executive director, Terry Kirshner, has been engaging in discussions with PLDA, with some libraries, and he may very well come here with the president to talk to you about it, and other not-for-profits to define for the future what digital inclusion means. And that's, what does it really mean, what will happen, and, and how do we support our 38-member libraries for that digital inclusion? So what I've done is that I've taken some questions that were given to our board by our executive director, and I called Terry and said, "Can I share your report to the board with our executive director?" And so there they are. And I won't go over them for the community, it's hot and it's a summer night, but they're interesting questions, and if you should decide to share them with the board. Some feedback, though, came from the library staffs, and it's an interesting feedback. And again, just think about it for the audience and for you, the most important asset in any library goes home every night, and that's your staff. It's the most important asset you have, other than your, whatever you acquire. So, and Tom can weigh in here, but, so the general public view, the general public often views the library as the go-to location for many kinds of things, but the staff is concerned about, the staff, and when I say the staff, staff members' feedback, keeping up with and training on technology. It's still an issue. It's still an issue. And it will be until all of our library schools change, because they haven't all changed. I don't think, I think I'm right there, Tom, but I'm not sure. So it's a digital literacy challenge for your library staffs. And in addition to sessions at WLS, WLS staffs are asking for more opportunities to receive hands-on training in their own local library. This is all about money, so WLS is concerned about that, too. How do we help raise the data to do that? So in terms of the type of training needs identified, the staff would like to feel more comfortable and more competent in downloading, downloading mobile apps onto patrons' smartphones and tablets, and keep, and knowing how to maximize the search and retrieval functions, which I still go to, for the e-content products that are coming out, because that's where we are. So working with member libraries, so that's, 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 that's a big deal, and that's going to be an ongoing conversation, because we also know that we have to raise money, but that's kind of an ongoing conversation. WLS sees itself as a center for innovation and as it should be. It's state money, it's, you know, taxpayers' money. Now, working with major libraries, member libraries, one of the things we are talking about is to create public Wi-Fi hotspots in the community with a well-oiled, to showcase the member libraries. See, there's a, there's a, there's a- See, there's a, there's a, there's a grid for grid there. We can get the hot, the, the hotspots in the community, then we can, you can showcase your, your own library. So there's, there's that tease. And then finally, I believe I have this correct, I believe I have this correct. The development, the, the library directors, I believe, are working, or some library directors are working on the development of an online library card application that would simplify the process and provide immediate access to digital resources. So that's...
That's a good idea.
Is that, is that what you guys are working on?
There was a committee that's been...
Yeah.
...elected that responsibility.
Because today you've got to fill out a piece of paper.
What?
You still have to fill out...
Yeah, I, I know, but...
You have to have ID and all sorts of things.
So, PLDA, working with...
The directors.
This is, this library directors, this is, the thirty-eight libraries, are exploring ways to reshape the digital content environment to create a more usual place for everybody. Of course, our member libraries are concerned about the ability to reallocate resources. I looked at your budget. That's a concern, and so that has to be addressed, too. Where do I get the money to do this, to move this to the digital content? WLS stands ready to, to help with the challenge, and that's where we're headed. Thank you.
Very helpful. Thank you. And maybe Tom would ask that if you could make...
Scan it, send it to the board.
Thank you. Is there a personnel report? Nope, no personnel report. Maybe we'll do, is there a personnel committee report?
Yeah, there's a, a short report. I thought we have, we have Daniel, Idira, and myself met. And we have come up with a tool to use for the evaluation. I'm just getting feedback on the tool.
Of the director?
Of the director. Sorry. Of the director. As soon as I have all the feedback, we will distribute it to everybody on the trust, we will distribute it to all the trustees, and we will also distribute it to you with further details. That's all I can say right now. I mean, WLS, do you two wanna add anything?
No.
Do you maybe just wanna remind what the goal, the timeline, what our aspiration, recognizing that the toolkit is, the tool, rather, isn't here now, but maybe just flagging. Do you want me, I can...
Pull up that document, Madam Wazelle, and do the thing, but that would require a second.
I think the timeline, I think I talked about the timeline last time. We wanna be done with this by the end of, I think by the November meeting.
Right.
Is when we wanna be done with it. So that would mean that I will distribute the tool to the trustees and to the director, and look for feedback during the month of October to meet with and to continue that process in October, so that in November ninth, we can report back that it's done, et cetera, et cetera. Is that?
Yeah.
Yep? If you guys have any questions, you can let us know. Okay?
Thank you. Anything else from Personnel Committee?
No.
Feels like a lot.
Okay. I think we have both Daniel and Sarah. I think Community Relations have reports.
So I wanted to touch base on, in our last meeting, I talked about having our, our, the Board of Trustees in collaboration with the New Rochelle School District Board in going to a training of Undoing Racism, a communal organization anti-racism training. In front of you, you should have kind of a one-page or overview. I don't know if you, I distributed it.
Yes, I do.
Do you have it?
No, but I'll share it with you.
And pretty much, to kinda like sum it up, it's, it's facilitated by Mr. David Peters, who was a core trainer through the Institute for Survival and Beyond, P-I-S-A-V. I have a kind of a mission statement, organization purpose, I can pass that out to as well, and his, and the vision of the institute as well as their collaborations and work that they've done throughout different communities, from Greensboro, New York, New Jersey, Seattle, Washington. So one of the things that, the objective is for all of us to work collaboratively and to explore and dive in into topics that are related to our community, our society, our nation, and even across our own personal experiences in undoing racism, understanding, celebrating culture, learning from history, networking, really having a dialogue, developing leadership, maintaining accountability, and reshape gatekeeping. And with that being said, I, I, I wanted to open it up to if anyone has any questions, thoughts, concerns, and kind of see if we decide that we want to do this, move forward and select a date sometime in early October. To give us some time, September is the start of the school year. We have a lot of Jewish holidays as well, and kids are going back to school and adjusting to schedule. So I'm thinking the first, one of the week, it would, it would have to be a weekend. Yeah, I think if I'm not mistaken, it'll be a full day and a half.
Yeah, like a Saturday.
Something like that, like a Saturday and Sunday. But, but like I said, if anyone here, questions, thoughts, concerns, yes?
Daniel, is this focused on board and administrators? Can it be open to staff? I mean, how, what's, what's the original approach or the initial approach?
My understanding, I think, and my view is, would be to directors and, and the board. Unless trustee, you know, if we want to include other individuals within the library or a, a school district, I mean, it's, it's, we can make that decision to see what, what fits best with it.
Just as a sidebar...
I just wanna comment that at the Board of Ed meeting, there was some discussion about this, and they're supposed to be supported last meeting in September, and they were hoping that they might be able to join with US Well, I mean, in doing this, it's a contract. I just wanna...
Board of... Can I just repeat what was said, because people may not hear it? One of the members of the audience had said that the school board was exploring the same training and was interested in partaking in the training along with our board, and so the discussion was just about the dates that might work. So, everybody knows.
We're just trying to figure out dates that work.
As a sidebar for, if someday if staff can be included, I don't know if Dr. Gray remembers. The Westchester Library System had a, a program years ago called Bridges Over Poverty, and it was, honestly, it was the best program I've ever attended, and my staff attended, and it was a real eye-opener for staff to look at people in a different way. People who were struggling, who were in a situation that was not familiar to them. So I, 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 I like the idea in the future of, in some way, shape, or form, broadening it to make it available to the people that work here so they can better understand the dynamic that might be going on on occasion.
We've got a unit in the shop that I work at, in my unit, that does undoing racism training. May I recommend, just, 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 may I recommend that the, it might be good, because staff may need a different kind of training. And I, I would recommend that they not be together. I would recommend that it be board trustees, yes. And that if, if, if you as a library, your own library wants to do that, and I know that the school, I don't know. I believe the school district has some of this kind of work going on already among its staff, but I just think the staff needs its own, that's is my judgment. It's spaced. It's spaced.
I think there's an element of...
Of safety and, see, I hate that word.
No, but comfort.
Yeah.
Having a board there.
Yeah.
Might make them more uncomfortable.
Yeah, I think that, yeah, because there's your, you know, so I, I think they both can be done. That's a, that's just my suggestion.
I think you're right.
That's fair.
Just, do, other question?
So, pretty much to sum it up, part of this training is for us to have a perspective of how we can envision our community being in harmony and with one another and with other segments of the global community as a whole.
Can I ask one question? Not that this has anything to do with our doing it or not doing it, because it doesn't, but is there a cost that we have to cover?
There is no cost that we would have to cover based on a conversation with Dave, because it would be a community work together with the school board and...
I think it's a problem if there's just more asking for, to know. So is it, so in terms of the ask tonight, is there an ask for the, the board members to confirm that they wanna participate? And then you'll be coming forward with dates at some point, offering them up?
Correct. Yeah, and I will, I will have, I'll be liaising on with the school district representatives, President Hastings and Vice President Wazelli to kind of coordinate, to confirm that all the dates are in sync with the library board and the school board.
I was, oh, I thought you were moving to the mic. I just, I'm curious, and this training over others, why?
Good question.
It's not a dig, right? There's thousands of training and aren't all individual capacities. We could do other things. I'm just, it's, it's a day and a half, so spell it out for me.
Yeah, yeah. I, I think, I've never, I've never, I've never been to one of these trainings, so I really have no, besides the content that I have, but, you know.
So, I, I'm, can you, would you mind coming up and speaking in the background?
Yeah.
And Lourdes, have you been to the training? We all asked. Lourdes, one of the first.
Wow.
And I did a twice, like, I think, I'm a person.
Two, yes. I only, I only need to do one, so you can do it twice.
So anyway, I just wanted to say that I've, I took the training, and I thought it was extremely powerful. And so, after having taken the training, I thought it made a lot of sense for the school board members to take it, because they're gonna be leading a district with a diverse population that we're trying to educate. I think starting at the top and making sure we understand the community we're serving makes a boatload of sense. So I encouraged our members, our school board, to do it, and so we're looking at it, and right now, we're looking at like the first week in October, and so we'd love to do it with the library board, and I think it'd be great to have all of us together, elected officials doing that. So anyway, that's my two cents.
Thank you.
I'm still, I'm not doubting the great.
Can someone dive into as, again, what makes this training special or what?
She's dying to dive in.
Let's pass you the mic.
Will you come to the mic?
Can you come up?
Or you can just take the mic. It's wireless, right? Oh, then we can't see you. Fair point, fair point. Yes, yes.
Okay, so, so briefly, I might say to advocate this...
Can you say your name?
Okay, Pat O'Keefe, thirty-five Pintard Avenue. The, the training is very much focused on structural change, individual change to some extent, but structural change. And as gatekeepers, we, boards, directors are gatekeepers. You're, you are the structure. And so, in order to have structural change, the people who are part of the structure have to become more aware. So, it's, it's a training that is focused on structural change, and that's why it's important for, like, the pillars of the community, community, not services, but community, participate in training like this.
I have a question. I have one thing you touched about, the day and a half. Is it? I'm okay with...
It's process-oriented. It's personal growth through conversation and interaction that takes time, because people move through zones of comfort to zones of discomfort and growth, and back around, and you can't do it in two hours. And so the process is what takes the time.
So part of it, part of it, what makes the training worthy of the two hours is the process part that goes into it. That's a huge piece of it. It's the time.
Right. Yes, the, the time is essential.
It's, it's meaningful. The time is purposeful.
Right, it's, it's not, it's not being given a bunch of facts. It's experience, it's experiencing it with each other, and...
And correct me if I'm wrong, I, I think the, the normal schedule of it is like a three-day thing, and it's just being condensed for our, our time.
Go ahead, huh? It, yeah. Um, I'll just, I, you know, I said this separately, it's just really important to get the date in. You know, my little guy's starting kindergarten, like, I'm, I'm, and I work in a school, so the first six weeks of, between now and mid-October are just busy personally, and so to the extent, if we're doing it with school board and they have a date, then let's, like, the, I have a husband, I have the court, you know, like, there's just, like, everybody has it, so I'm not making my priorities better than others, but, you know, very few things get a day and a half of anything, other than my job, just because of where I am right now in my life with my children, and I'm just very conscious of the fact that I lose time with them and weekends are my time with them. And so, I'd probably try to take a day off of work to compensate for the Saturday I lose. It's just things that I wanna get in place so I can be all in, and I don't just wanna, like, go because everybody's going. I wanna really feel like I'm in. But scheduling will help me do that, so I'm just being kind, candid, and honest.
So I guess we can make a decision here if the first week of October, is that?
So does that work for you guys? If we're gonna sit here and do this, does that work for you guys?
Like, all day Saturday and half a day Sunday?
October sixth.
Is that what we're talking about? Do we have exact dates?
That's October sixth and seventh.
Six and seven.
Yeah. Sunday's obviously not, because we're gonna have to ask them.
That's, um, that first week in October, weekend in October is a, is Columbus Day weekend?
No.
No?
No.
The second one?
No, Columbus Day is the eighth.
Okay.
It's the Monday. It's the Monday. So, I mean, if some of us are taking that day, that weekend, but...
So, so it's being...
He's saying it's that weekend.
It's the weekend.
It's that weekend?
Not the Monday.
Okay, I mean, I...
It's a matter that I can't do it, but I can't do it that weekend. You cannot do that.
For my parents' fiftieth anniversary. So then he's going to, let, why don't we say he'll reach out and try, and he'll work with the school board and try to get as many people there as possible?
For the six, seven.
Well, I don't know, but...
Right.
He'll talk to you, because you really want the date.
Do the Google doodle.
Do the doodle.
The Google poll. The doodle poll's the best.
So can I include you in the doodle?
Yes.
It's a great tool.
Yes, I know.
So I'll doodle.
It's a power. The power of the doodle.
The Google doodle.
Daniel, you're gonna do that?
Yeah, I'll doodle.
You'll do it?
I'll doodle.
The Google doodle reduced the boarding email volume by seven.
Yes, yes!
It was a good...
That's a great...
Do you have anything else?
No.
Sarah?
I'd love to go to this.
Yes, at our last meeting during the public commentary, it had come up, the policy around obtaining a New Rochelle Public Library card. So Tom sent over to the superintendent and the Board of Education the policy. So as far as them accepting it for whatever sort of registration they're doing, it's at their discretion, so it's kind of out of our hands, and that just closes that up on our end.
Thank you. Do we have any other committees that have a report to make?
The Needs Assessment.
I'm sorry, that's correct. The Assessment Committee. I'm sorry, that was an accident.
Oh, you did a power push?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I was wondering what that was about. Yes!
Okay, so, we started with just some basic ideas on the Needs Assessment Committee, so for, you know, the New Rochelle community and for the... Sorry.
Okay, yeah.
Hello? So we took approach on looking at the library with the Needs Assessment Committee, and specifically because of the conversations with Development and RXR, and obviously my experience as a developer, let's try to look at the library from an asset point of view, and how do we increase this asset that we currently own. So what we found out, what I found out, it's hard to see here, if you look in the top left-hand corner, you know, the power of the library is beyond its walls. It actually creates value for the entire community, so much so that, on average, homes within a quarter-mile of a library are worth, on average, almost ten thousand dollars more than homes outside the library. So just the fact that libraries exist and... That is national average, national average, right. So, also, for homes between a quarter-mile and a half-mile of a library, the additional value is six hundred and fifty dollars. So, we say that to say that what we're discovering, and this is all discovery, by the way, is that the best move, at least from the information we have now, is that you keep the library as is without any outside developer, and you look at how to increase the value of the asset that currently exists. So that is not having it converted into anything outside of what it is today. So this is all discovery. So one of the other things we discovered... this is all discovery, so it's not for distribution, but it's for informational purposes only. You know, there are a lot of things that have assets to library, emails, research facilities, internet resources, generates local business traffic, which actually increases our tax revenue, if these businesses are actually generating revenue. It holds historical records of significance, which is another thing of the asset that currently exists, called the library. So it also improves, if you look at the top right-hand corner, improves overall quality of life by 92 percent, the physical structure of a library. It increases the local property values by over 47 percent. It attracts new business to the community by 38 percent, and it attracts patronage to local businesses by 44 percent, which then becomes a direct result of increased tax revenue to helps the, which helps the city. So these are just the first steps, right? This is a, a very not deep, deep dive, but, you know, just, these are all different research reports from the American Library Association, State of South Carolina, New Orleans City, Minnesota, did their own research on libraries. And it's a combination of all those findings, which are nationally-based as their mission. So, as we continue to go down this road of the Needs Assessment Committee, we're looking to, to end the third quarter, beginning of fourth quarter, to have the entire community come together and really dig into all these different aspects, as well as Deirdre and Whitney had some other items. And what we're doing is just brainstorming on the best way to move ahead, to have the community really have a voice and the best steps for the library. But from what we've found and the initial findings here is that the asset as it is, is an increase, is a valuable asset that can increase in value, as is obviously with some improvements and things like that. But, to a real estate development point of view, I would argue that it makes sense for real estate developers to invest in the physical structure of the library with no strings attached, so the library can be its best standalone building that it can be, because it increases the value of their, you know, buildings. So really, it's an investment in their own assets for them to invest in a library with no strings. Yeah, go ahead.
Is this a good place to stand? So, just to continue and complement and supplement what we've been doing, we've met twice for hours and hours. This is one of the kind of outward-facing components that we're trying to work on, and the other thing that we're working on is really related to the process by which we engage the community. So, the first part of that continuation of the discovery is who is the community, who are the stakeholders? How do we reach as many people as we possibly can? How do we get as many perspectives as we possibly can? And what is the method through which we conduct that outreach? And then what will we do, what, what is the outreach? What is the content of the, of the questions that we're asking and the feedback we're looking for? And then what will we do with that feedback when we get it? And so, really, we're not looking for anyone to come in and impose anything upon us. We may ask for a facilitator to, you know, use their professional expertise to express better than we may be able to, and kind of pull from our stakeholders as effectively as possible, what, what we hope will be, you know, information and feedback and data that will be as reflective of our, of our community's needs and wants as possible. So, this is something that we're, we're kind of cultivating, and we'll be looking increasingly to our community and stakeholders and people who love the library as much as we do in the coming months.
Do you want to just take it in a teaser about this whole idea about the community forum or no?
The community forum?
Or the community summit?
Summit, sure. I mean, yeah, we, sure. So, Deirdre's asking if, if I would like to go into greater detail about the format of how, of the, you know, we, we've been talking about everything from round tables, which is, you know, groups of, you know, eight to 10 people, where you have really, like, in-depth productive conversations, all the way, you know, up a notch, I guess, to workshops, or, you know, smaller, small, bigger groups, but in still in a small context, to we've, we've tossed around a transformational summit, and, you know, kind of these really big lofty ideas and everything in between. So, we, you know, we're, we're really exploring right now. We may do a combination of those things, and really, we're trying to cast as wide a net as possible. So, a big splashy thing will be, something we'll be able to get as, more people to, but smaller-
It will not be a questionnaire.
What's that?
It will not be a questionnaire.
It's a, right, we want people to come in.
We will, we may do a combination, though we may have surveys, we may have, we want as many outlets and avenues for soliciting feedback as possible. So, so stay tuned. Yep.
So, I'm an all-time person, but- Meaning I've been here a long time. So, New Rochelle is a fascinating, I mean, I, I think, I love this city, but it is a city. It's not a little suburban community, it's a city. And that's an important thing to understand. And as you look at the community, community is interesting. So, I would like to, to know, how does that deep dive look? What's that deep dive? You know, when I was around as, as President of this library, we talked about the east end, the west side, the north end, the south end. Well, New Rochelle is changing to lots of ends. And so, when we talk about the community, who are we, not, I don't want you to answer this tonight, I don't want you to answer that, but I believe and hope that you really mean the community, which is highly inclusive.
Yes.
Okay.
That's what we mean.
Yes, that's what we mean.
Excellent. The only thing, for all this is amazing, I love, I love stats and data and very visual, so this is like right up my learning style, so I really appreciate the effort that clearly went behind this. Real props to, to all of you guys for conceiving this. I think the only thing I would say is to not shy away from the surveys, only because if it's, if the workshops or things are on a day that someone's working or can't come in, we want everybody to feel that they can participate. And Whitney, you, months ago, not to put you on the spot, you had shared a really neat idea from a library, where it was like, they were sending like one question that you could sort of yes or no, like, we need to upgrade, it was, I don't remember, it was a library seeking feedback from the community. It was really quick, really pretty graphics, really simple questions, yes, no, and you were like, oh, maybe another way to sort of, so I don't want to shy away from those kinds of ideas. In addition to all types of workshop-y, you know, round tables, as many as, like, we have the bandwidth to sort of serve, to ensure that we get the feedback to Dr. Gray's point.
Excellent points. And I would just say, you know, I'm in the throes of this right now professionally, because my organization is the recipient of an Avenue NYC grant. We do a commercial district needs assessment, which is a commercial district needs assessment, not a community needs assessment, but it's the same principle. So, we're doing everything from property owners and business owners and tenants to residents and the school-based populations, the libraries, faith-based organizations, see all the community-based organizations, neighborhood organizations, neighborhood associations, I'm sorry. So, we're trying to find as many kind of groups of stakeholders, and then we'll reach out to as, everybody in as many ways as possible, absolutely not shying away from surveys, because I think that can capture people who don't want to sit around and talk for two hours at a round table, or don't have the time or inclination, but really do want to be part of the process. And I think we will get to the point where we will ask for more participation in rallying people to come and, and use your voice. There's a squeaky wheel group who's very vocal, but I know there are more people with lots of feelings and thoughts and, and probably great ideas, and we want to hear as many of them as possible.
Great.
Thank you.
Well, I want to thank the Needs Assessment Committee, that was great. It's clear that a lot of work has gone in so far, so we're excited about what's to come, and thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anything else?
Adjournment is on there.
I just want to have one brief thing, Barbara, she just asked me to mention, like I mentioned. Good? Barbara has asked our Board members as well as audience members, people in the TV audience, et cetera, to take a, take a moment, if you're in the library, to look at the photos that's currently in our room in Winter Gallery, they're really amazing. They depict how our library's been used during the summer by our children, the programs. It's worth your, a few minutes of your attention.
Just get back, the programs this summer, I know I keep on saying this, but my children did them, and then I encouraged other people to do the programs, and they did them. They were just phenomenal. There was a writing program, there was a program at New Rochelle, there was an architecture program, and they were really phenomenal. And I would just encourage us to get as many people aware of them as possible, they're free. I mean, they're not really free, we paid them, you know, through our taxes, but they are free to those who decide.
And actually, as, as much as the foundation, the friends too.
So that's, so I just-
Our friends as well.
Yeah, I just encourage us to really get the word out about them, they're just wonderful. Sorry.
Thank you. I will make a move to adjourn the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.